I'd like to welcome everyone to the Joint Hybrid Planning Board Meeting of June 26. And I'll take a call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Yeah.
Ms. Delicio.
Yeah.
Ms. Foley.
Yeah.
Ms. Romley here. Ms. Filbrook.
Here.
And Ms. Tenney.
Here.
Thanks. Looks like we have a full quorum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests who ask to be recognized by the chair, if you wish to speak, and this meeting is being recorded. Sure, thanks, James. Yes. Okay, first item on the agenda acknowledged, receipt of correspondence. We received on 6/25 a letter from Tim Gates, which I distributed into your meeting packets. At this point, on the agenda, I'd like to allow public comments on items not on the agenda with a limited amount of time. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Okay, first item on the agenda is the short presentation from Sarah Creighton on the Planning Board warrant articles and possible changes.
Let me just make sure I've got the right screen here, hold on. Yep, okay, so. Okay. I. Let's see if I can do this. There we go. So at the, when we had passed the proposed bylaw changes a couple of weeks ago, we had said we would just do a quick summary for anybody who hadn't had a chance to, from the public who hadn't had a chance to be available for the public hearing or was confused by the changes as we went through it. So hopefully this is a concise summary. And so we have three proposed changes. I don't know if the screen's online. The first is a new Section 12 called Administration and Procedures. So we have an existing, oh, it's not a section, Section 12, sorry. It's just a Section 12. We have an existing Section 12 called Administration. And this, actually, Ron, would you mind just moving the? Or maybe the meeting can, the online can probably see it fine.
Yeah, I think they can see.
Okay, thank you. So this is simply an update to those administration, administrative procedures. And it's really the final part of a multi-year zoning effort to renumber and reorganize and modernize our bylaw. So a couple of key things it does is defines the roles of the building inspector, the zoning board appeals, and the planning board. And it increases or the applicability of penalties and strengthens the procedures for reviewing special permits and site plan review and includes provisions for special conditions that are required by law. This was developed with advice of counsel. And I'll go through briefly the changes. So in the middle column is the new administrative section. In the right-hand column is the old section. And so, as I said, the inspector of buildings is defined. In the old administrative, it was not. We also both define the certificate of occupancy. The criminal, there are noncriminal penalties and criminal penalties stipulated where the penalties previously were just defined as $300 a day. ZBA is defined in both, but the new definition updates it to align with the statute. And the planning board is defined, our number, seven members elected. And this Section 12 gives the planning board the authority to make regulation and set fees, which I think is allowed by state law, but it articulates it here. And then the second set of changes is, both of them define the authority and criteria for special permits and establish procedures and fees for those. The new administration, administrative section refers to Section 6 for specific review criteria. And this was a deliberate change that we did when we renumbered and reorganized the bylaw. We consolidated the criteria for reviewing both special permits and site plan review into Section 6. And I think one of the things that's important to recognize about the zoning is that it's evolved over time. And there were many, and remain many, sections of the bylaw that were put in by citizen petition or as a dedicated effort to address a particular issue, let's say groundwater. And every time that piece of new zoning was added, the writers of that section added these special permit criteria. And so they were redundant over and over in the many sections. And some of them still remain. But the work we did back in November was an effort to try to consolidate those as well as to modernize them by making them performance standard rather than prescriptive. Site plan applicability is defined in Section 12. It is not included in the administrative section that is currently in our bylaw. And it's actually not, it's only referenced in one small place in Section 4. And we wanted to make sure that there was site plan applicability. This occurred because we were, when we were updating things, we never got to Section 12 at the November town meeting. And that was an unintentional oversight, so we want to fix that. And then lastly, the new Section 12 has provisions for the site plan review of Dover Amendment cases. Those are certain nonprofits like churches and schools. And lastly, requests for reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act, which is a legally required part of zoning. We'll stop there for any questions that people might have. I can't see the screen, so I'll let you.
Can board members have comments?
Sure, I think.
Ron, I don't see any questions.
Yep.
So just a couple tweaks that I would make is that, and it's subjective. On the first page where it says strengthens procedures, criteria for reviewing special permits and site plan review. I think in some cases, it can strengthen it, and in other cases, it weakens it. So I wouldn't use the word strengthen in there.
Can I just respond to that one? I think you're correct. I think it just stipulates, it refers to Section 6 for the procedures. That's a correct, no, you are correct. It just refers to Section 6 for the procedures for reviewing the special permits, right?
So I would recommend that we just say changes procedures.
Changes, yep, that's perfectly fine. So anybody listening, it's a, it changes, correct.
So then in the grid, under special permits and site plan, where you refer to Section 6, I think the big change that residents should know is that, if they're not referencing back to Section 6, is that Section 6 allows broad capabilities for the ZBA, the planning board, or the select board to waive requirements. So that could be on a nonconforming application. It could be on a large development. It could be on a swimming pool. So I think that's important criteria to include if we want to be transparent and let residents know what's being changed.
So I looked at that specific issue for this presentation. I do, did pull out the language in Section 6.3. First of all, it's not subject, it's not going to be discussed at the town meeting on the 28th because it's not on the warrant.
Correct.
But the performance standards are quite, for the people listening, Mary is correct that the Section 12 refers to these performance standards in Section 6.3, which we updated in November. And those performance standards provide pages of detailed requirements for the things listed here. I'll go through them. And then also, the planning board has authority to impose additional requirements within these broad categories as well as to issue the permits upon finding that the plan is in conformance with the requirements. That's the criteria. But, and as Mary had said, we may waive certain requirements, but the language right out of the bylaw says, provided such waiver is not inconsistent with public health and where the proposed development will adequately serve the goals and objectives set forth in the bylaw. So yes, there are waiver requirements, but they are there with that provision.
So if I can just continue, which I don't have an updated version of the, I don't have these pages in my packet, but.
Yeah, I just brought it in case it came up.
I looked, okay. So again, and to be clear, yes, it has what you listed. But to be clear, we move, this is proposing moving from special permit. And it moved to 6.3, which was already voted in. But it is moving the compatibility with the neighborhood, the views and vistas, the size and shape, that type of thing. So again, we need to be open and transparent of, because those are the big issues that come up with nonconforming, with swimming pools, with those types of things. So we have to be clear that that could now be waived.
But that's not the subject of this town meeting.
It is the subject of the town meeting because we're linking the new 12 to 6. So if we kept the current 12, we're not linking that. The new 12 does.
I, we'd have to get a legal, you know, I think the new, the 6 is there whether it's linked in 12 or not.
Correct. It's standalone, and our current 12 is standalone. But the proposed 12 is now linking back to 6. So that becomes a different scenario. We just need to be clear.
So you're saying when, in the old 12, Section 6.3 would not be applicable to anything?
No, of course it would be. It would be above and beyond what we currently have for special permit, which has, our current special permit has the compatibility with the neighborhood, views and vistas, all that type of thing. So that stands on its own. The new 12 takes it away from 12, refers it to 6. So it becomes a waive, waivable at that point. So we just need to be clear that residents understand that.
So Mary, if you're concerned about, excuse me, we're jumping in this. If you're concerned about waivers, why wasn't this raised in November?
Because we had a standalone special permit bylaw. And we had so much going on that we never delved into detail on these things. I don't even know.
Of course we delved into, we delved into detail for years.
No, well, it's not true because the performance standards are quite new. And I still, as a planning board member, I don't know if something is waived, can a aggrieved party do a, an appeal? I don't know if you can appeal on something that's waived. I don't know.
Well, the purpose of tonight is to indicate what is on the warrant. And you are correct that the new Section 12 refers to Section 6.3. And I think it's, maybe we can get a legal opinion about whether Section 6.3 would, and its waiver provision would apply, whether or not it's in Section 12. So.
Betsy.
Oh, Betsy, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. So sorry for the delay in getting here. So to address Mary's concern, I have been a staff person of several boards and commissions that have had a waiver provision. And the waiver provision basically allows the planning board in an unusual situation to waive the strict adherence to a certain requirement. That being stated, I don't know, I don't recall too many planning boards actually doing that. And if they did it, it was very clear that it was an unusual circumstance. So for example, cell signaling is building a parking garage, potentially. And that, the planning board regulations and zoning do not have anything on parking garages in the bylaw. It's, the space configurations are in there, but not for a parking garage. So I think that cell signaling has come in to talk with the board about this. That may be an appropriate situation where a waiver of strict compliance with the parking bylaws is allowed because the town doesn't have any regulations on parking garages. That being stated, appeals can take place as a result of a waiver granted. I have seen that before. And to answer Mary's question.
Should we continue on the summary?
But usually, the planning board thinks long and hard about granting a waiver because it has to be an unusual circumstance and it has to be still addressing the health, safety, welfare, and the provisions of a certain bylaw.
So, keep sharing. Okay, so the second, the second article is to, would be passed over if the prior article, Article 3, were to pass, passes. And this is to add just this provision about what site plan review, what the applicability of site plan review is. Remember, I said that that was removed out of Section 6, and we didn't pass Section 12 in November, so this is GAAP. We use legacy language, and specifically, it provides for site plan review. The last article is Article 6, which corrects errors and omissions. When we did the, all of the numbering and reorganizing, I think no fewer than six people cross-checked. And we found many, many, many references across the bylaw to other sections, but we missed some. So this article simply fixes them. The other thing that if you're reading that Article 6 warrant, proposed motions, excuse me, you might notice that there's some language deleted out of the groundwater protection bylaw. Rest assured, that's just language that was inserted in the wrong section. It was correctly moved and passed at town meeting to go into Section 5. It is there, but it was also somehow added into Section 10. And so this is just to delete it because it has nothing to do with groundwater protection, and it does not change the groundwater protection bylaw. And then there are some section numbering changes also in Section, in Article 6. I think that's the summary, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Sarah, any questions from the public? Sarah Pierce, has your handle?
Ah, yes, thank you. Sarah Pierce, Knight Front Street. I guess that is a little bit confusing when you're talking about, like Betsy said, extreme circumstances. And again, I just, how do people refer to what is actually allowable or not? If it's not, that's kind of a super subjective thing, isn't it? Extreme circumstances. I mean, it was outside of, it just doesn't seem clear as to what would be allowable and what it wouldn't.
Betsy has a question.
So Betsy, do you want to answer that, extreme? You've had experience with this.
So Sarah, the example that I gave of cell signaling, or it could be anybody, we don't have parking garage regulations. And there's nothing in the zoning that talks about parking garage specifications for size of parking space. We have mainly on-the-ground stuff. But in some situations, there could be somebody building a parking garage. And it's much more expensive to do that than surface parking. But it's much more environmentally friendly, or maybe environmentally friendly, to do a parking garage. So that's what I'm talking about in terms of a unique circumstance. That you have somebody building a parking garage. I can't even think of any parking garages in Manchester. So you've got somebody that needs to build a parking garage versus have surface parking. That's an unusual situation. So in that instance, I could see after a fair amount of documentation that the planning board may say, well, yeah, we'll grant you a waiver because we realize that you're putting in a parking garage, and we don't have anything in our regulations. We think a parking garage, based on the data that you've provided and the data that our consultants have provided, it may be better to have a parking garage versus surface parking. And so the planning board could issue a waiver from the sizes of the parking spaces that are in the zoning because it's a parking garage versus surface parking. Does that help?
It's a good example for like an industrious situation. But this is, you're talking more about, this isn't going to affect special permits, waivers for residential, same process? Because it talks about the planning board and their authority. Is there, is the authority changing in any way, shape, or form? I'm confused about that.
Well, the planning board under Mass General Law has a fair breadth of authority. And in their zoning, they can include language that as long as it's voted by town meeting, that's the authority they're given. Mass General Law sets up the baseline. And then the town and the various boards and commissions involved with zoning come up with the language. It goes to town meeting. And if the planning board has given that authority, then they have that authority.
So where's the clear language on what will be presented at town meeting? On what the planning board will have authority over?
It doesn't state specifics, but it states that the planning board can grant waivers. This is very common language in.
But how do you, how could you vote on something that doesn't have specifics?
Because you don't, you can't read what every, you can't anticipate what every specific is going to be.
Right, but you'd have to, no, you'd have to go for a special permit, but you'd think there would be.
Let's not get into a back and forth. Greg, you have a comment?
Okay, I'm just trying to understand it. I just don't, I don't understand. So I'm trying to get Mary.
There's also, and, Greg, me, tell me if I'm wrong, Betsy, but there's a appeal period for any site plan by.
Yeah, there's a 20-day appeal period. And if somebody thinks that the planning board acted erroneously, then they can appeal it if they're a party of interest.
So I can help.
Or 10 residents.
Greg, you have your hand up. Can you clarify?
We never asked if the board had, no, we're talking, the public and Greg.
Excuse me?
This isn't a hearing. This is a.
Do you have a question?
You didn't ask the board if we had comments. You're taking comments from the public.
We had a question from the public, and I would like to answer. I had a comment myself.
All right, Ms. Foley, you want, you have a comment?
Yeah, so to the question, the, the parking garage is an example of an extreme, but we don't have any bumpers or parameters currently in the proposal. So it could be, and I'm still not clear if it's a simple majority or a supermajority that could do a waiver. It could just be the will of the board. And so I can provide residents with a list of all the ZBA and the planning, and the planning board's special permits. You know, it's everything from ADUs, nonconforming, large developments, swimming pools, et cetera. So I, and I would like to know some of the towns that do allow waivers. I couldn't find any towns that allow waivers, but.
Mary, almost every zoning amendment, regulation.
Wait.
So I've, I've looked at 12. I couldn't find, so I just.
We're not talking.
If I can provide further information, I will.
Christine, you have a comment?
I do have a comment. So I thank you, Betsy, for attempting to answer that question. But to Sarah's point, the waiver of standards is for anything. It doesn't say extreme circumstances. So when it reverts back to Section 3.1, you used a commercial. But this reverts back to single-family residences or multifamilies of less than six units. So any, without any kind of boundaries, back to single families, it does not provide the example, Betsy, that you just gave. So I think there's wide discretion in here, and we didn't have this language. So the public should be on notice.
We're talking, we're trying to, we've had to vote on this. The purpose of tonight was to inform the public about what we voted. And, and we voted that, and I know you disagree with it, but the fact of the matter is 6.3 is not on the warrant. And so that's.
So what we did vote on was bringing two motions or four motions to town meeting. And we have three. The scrutiny errors do not account for if 12 doesn't pass. So I don't know where this information, a lot of, I mean, you just said that you made this in conjunction with town council. You know, us as a board didn't discuss this with town council. We asked to be included with town council meetings. Mary was supposed to be a point person with us.
Jonathan was here.
Yeah, he came to our meetings. He went through with the whole thing, line by line.
This PowerPoint.
I made.
No, he went through, we went through the, the PowerPoint was my attempt to tell the public what we're doing. I think it was a good faith effort as a volunteer. I think it's accurate with the exception.
So when Jonathan was here, we had two motions. It was going to be 6 or 12. And those two each had their own clerical errors that needed to be corrected. There's not, there's not a warrant article that addresses if 12 fails.
Well, that's quite.
That's, yes, it is. That's Article 4.
That's 4. And if 12 pass, if 12 doesn't pass and 6.5 does, we would amend 6, the article last, whichever one that is, 5, to change 12.6 to 6.5 in, I believe there are four places.
That's not what we agreed to when Jonathan was here. We agreed to have, so I don't know where that came up with.
That's a simple way of handling it.
But that's not what we agreed to. We agreed to four articles.
Well, we have three.
So somewhere behind the scenes, this happened. And I'm not real, I'm very concerned what's happening behind the scenes because when Jonathan was here, that's not what we agreed to.
Okay, we were trying to bring the, I think, can I just close this out? My effort here was to help the public understand. And happy to talk to people offline. And I think Greg had a clarifying about waivers or something, but maybe we don't want to.
Becky, then?
Hi, yes. Regarding what is on the warrant or not, I know this has been stated before, but it's the select board that sets the warrant. So there's no behind-the-scenes going on. And I frankly am getting a little frustrated with that when what seems behind the scenes is certain questions from the public that completely align with comments made by Mary Foley and Christina Delicio. And that's, that's where the behind-the-scenes seems to be coming from. I'm really, really frustrated when those who seem to be the ones doing behind-the-scenes work are pointing fingers at the rest of us who are as upfront and open as can be. And the select board makes the decision of the town warrant. That has always been. And if you don't know that by now, that's about as basic as it gets. Thank you.
Okay. I have a comment to that, Ron. First of all, I think Becky misunderstood, at least what I was referring to is the motions that the planning board is making on the floor has never been discussed by the planning board. Of course, people know who makes the articles and the warrants. We, as a board, have not yet discussed the motions, who will bring them up at town meeting, and what will be said. So that's the concern. When we agreed to having four, and now it's down to three, and I don't know where that happened. So we can discuss that at another topic, but I don't really need any reprimands from anybody. I'm just doing my job here, and it should be a planning board discussion.
Okay, Ms. Pierce, do you have something new to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment about, and respectfully, Becky, I would like to say on behalf of myself and a lot of other people that watch these meetings or hear about them or have been on them and off of them for times before, there's a clear divide on the board. And it's really unsettling for the public. And then it's even more unsettling to have someone from the select board single out two members of the planning board.
Is this a question on the presentation? Because I'm not, I'm not.
It is a question about the presentation because the presentation.
What is the question on, on the, is it on the warrant articles?
Well, I guess you can't ask questions that are already decided. And I don't think this is a fair process, to be honest. And I think it's, it's just for the record, it is unsettling to a lot of people who agree with maybe both sides of the divided board. And it's just upsetting as a resident to see two people who do work very hard and you all also work very hard, but to continually get voted down and then pointed out at a public meeting. So that's my comment. I don't have anything else to say because there's going to be no explanations about the article or the anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SR, mistake your name.
Yes, Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I just want to raise that at the last meeting, not the very last one, but the one before, when we had to disband at the high school, a large issue was the fact that what was presented to the town did not explicitly state what was there before and what was there after. To be very clear, when people are there, they can't read all the detail and it's been very difficult to follow. Can you let me speak? It's very difficult to follow the articles when it crosses into multiple sections of the bylaws. And there can be implications when there are dependencies between them. And I think it's very important that as it's presented, that it be very clear. There was a lot of back and forth when there was talk about who could do curb cuts and who had the authority to approve and not. And I think what I heard was a bit of a confusion to me as to the latitude of what board can do, what kind of waving, et cetera. So I recommend that the details do matter and it be very clear. Thank you.
Betsy?
I just want to say that on May 18th, the board in the late afternoon had a discussion about the three articles that we were going to be talking about for a special town meeting. There was very little activity after that. It was mainly in the hands of legal counsel. And it was through Mary Foley's discussion with me today that I ended up getting copies of the warrant language and the motions that the board has in front of them now. So there was a lot going behind the scenes that didn't involve the planning board and was mainly looking at legal reviews. And I think that there are two very minor clarifications that legal counsel has recommended that the board adjust. And other than that, I think it's pretty much what we talked about.
Greg?
Thanks, Ron. Just a few comments. One, the three articles are the three articles that the planning board voted to advance. That's why they're in there. And the wording in those three articles in the motions are exactly what the planning board provided with the exception of those two possible amendments. Those amendments only go forward if the planning board approves them tonight. At least as part of the motion. Someone else, someone individually could move to amend. But if you want them as part of the motion, then you would need to vote those tonight as two changes to which you have already approved. But the motions contain exactly what the planning board has already approved. The second comment is about waivers. The waiver provision has to be construed within the parameters of the bylaw. So it's not an arbitrary waiver process. Waivers have to be consistent with the bylaws and they can't contradict what is in the bylaws. That language is part of that waiver provision. Has to be consistent with the intent of the bylaw. So it's very common for waivers to be allowed, but they have to have, they have to be within, you know, the guardrails of what the bylaws provide. So I think that's what Betsy was trying to convey is that waivers can be done, but they are not often done because they're difficult to obtain. The applicant has to prove that the waiver is justified and still is within the intent and basic provisions that the bylaw provides. And lastly, the challenge of providing side-by-side comparisons when you do a complete rewrite is difficult. So when you have a complete rewrite, it's not a line-by-line comparison. Whole sections are rewritten. I think the board has provided a walkthrough of what those changes are proposing to do. And people can always bring the existing bylaw with them and compare it to the new bylaw. So that's always an option. And if we think we want to provide that, we can. So I would take my direction from you folks as to what you think would be most helpful for the voters to have in their hand on Wednesday night.
I believe that this is on our website. Detailed side-by-side is up on the website.
So we move to the amendments to the.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
I haven't, I can share those.
Go ahead. It's two amendments we need to vote.
I'm sorry, where are the amendments?
So the, at the select board's meeting that Greg had flagged that the, this is in the fallback, the section 6.5 inserted for site plan applicability. The old site plan applicability said more than five, but less than 10 parking spaces. That's what we proposed and voted on. And the suggestion is to strike in the motion that goes to the floor, but less than 10 parking spaces. So that its site plan review would be for people who have 12 parking spaces or 25 parking spaces or 250. It seems to make a lot of sense. So I will move that we accept the proposed change to the motion for section, for article four, making the change that what Greg suggested by striking but less than 10 parking spaces. I'm going to stop sharing so that we can see the screen.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Are both amendments going to be about section 6.5?
No.
So we're going to consider this and that's all. May I comment? The proposal makes common sense because it strengthens the site plan review to any project with more than five spaces. I think less than 10 seems like an odd oversight and probably not the original intent. However, we have also said that we're not making any changes to it. So I think we're going to need to be clear about that, about why, if we're changing one thing, what is the one thing we're changing and why? Because I don't want people to get, to feel that there is some sort of, you know, judgment call about which section six is the better one based on the parking count.
I think it's, I think the remarks will have to say, with the exception of a broadening from five to 10 spaces to more than five. And that was just always in there, the less than 10?
That's the legacy language.
That is the legacy language.
Any further discussion, Ms. Foley?
Yeah, I think because we had, and I'm trying to find it now, we had in a different section of our old bylaw with carking that the five or more spaces. And we always relied on that. And I think with all the revisions, that was taken out. But I need to find where it was. But both of the site plan review, special permit and site plan approval, which we got rid of, we both had the more than five, less than 10. But we had it somewhere else in the bylaw, just the five or more. But I agree with that.
So can I just rephrase Mary's comment for a second? And that means that you're, you agree that it was at least, to your point, while it wasn't the exact language, it was the intent of the prior, of the legacy bylaw? Because what you're saying is we had it elsewhere. So to make this change keeps it consistent with the intent of.
I have no idea what the intent was. I'm just saying we had another bylaw to rely on. And I can't find it right now. But I think it makes sense for it to be five or more. But yeah, I don't know what the intent was prior years.
If we vote for discussion, it's all well and standing.
What's the, what am I saying? Amending the, taking in the motion to take out the more than 10. Yes.
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 Take out the less than 10.
Less than 10, sorry.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Do you have votes? Yes.
Oh, Philbrick.
Oh, Ms. Philbrick, sorry. I'm you.
Raise your hand if you can. If you raise your hand.
There we go, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second amendment.
The second, oops, am I still sharing now? The second one was, it's customary for the warrant to go to Michelle Rondazzo. And her suggestion was that we delete in the penalty section the upon conviction language that we added at the very end. Maybe Greg can clarify why she thought that, or Alan, why she recommended that change.
Greg?
Sure, thank you. So it was actually Jonathan Murray's review. So this is involving noncriminal dispositions. So the whole concept of noncriminal depositions or dispositions is that it is more like a ticketing process. Violation is uncovered and a fine is issued. So there's no court proceedings. So it doesn't really make sense to have upon conviction under the noncriminal disposition section, the 12.2.3. So when this is pointed out, Jonathan, it's actually Paul Landau brought it to my attention. I brought it to Jonathan's attention. And he recommended indeed that that phrase, upon conviction, be deleted from the noncriminal disposition section.
Okay. I'll make a motion to strike upon conviction from section, from the, for the, from the motion under article three within section 12.3 of the proposed language.
Second.
Second.
Chris?
Any discussion? Laura?
What is the downside of leaving it in? I understand that it's more correct to say upon conviction, but it's legal counsel.
Greg, can you answer that or what's the downside?
The whole point was, I think it was just copy and paste, to be honest, because this should have been corrected at the meeting. They just copied the previous criminal section to the noncriminal because we need the noncriminal so we can actually give the $300 ticket. The criminal lets us, makes Paul take the person to court. Taking upon conviction out allows him to write the ticket. This was just whoever was doing this, this is a scrivener error. This should not have been included originally at all.
I understand the need for the non, for the criminal and the noncriminal. And I'm only asking the question because of these kind of late-breaking changes and causing any confusion. Could this be considered a scrivener's error and put in that warrant? I mean, does that help? And I think Greg was going to address it maybe. Or maybe he wasn't. I thought he had a same.
The second part of that, the second part of that paragraph was what he was copying and pasting.
So you agree it should just be taken out?
It should be, yes.
It doesn't make sense, so.
I think he just copied the whole thing.
Fairly common to have this kind of small editorial changes as several more people review it.
The whole point upon conviction was that Paul can.
I'm totally with that. And I'm really not trying to question that at all. Just trying to limit the editorial tweaking that we're doing at this point, if it's not necessary. But it sounds like this is. In the packet. These two changes will make their way to the packet so they won't have to be amendments on the floor. Okay.
Greg?
That's for that clarification.
Do you have a comment for discussion?
Yeah, well, no, I agree with what Christina was saying about why you need, why it's best to remove it. Because you don't want to tie ticketing to criminal conviction. The whole idea is to have a streamlined process to avoid conviction. So you don't want someone to challenge your ticket because our bylaw says you can only ticket me after I have been convicted. So that's why it's recommended we take it out. And because it was in your originally warned public hearing and was never changed, it's best to make it as a change as part of the motion. And just highlight that those two words are proposed to be removed as part of the motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll. Alan Wilson?
Thanks, Ron. I just want to say that I agree that it makes sense to include it in the motion. Since though the prior versions of the motions have been circulated, I think it would be a good idea for the person speaking on these two to point out the change.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll. Call vote on the amendment, Ms. DeLicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Stroll?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Philbrick?
Yes.
Do you have votes? Yes. Okay, thank you.
I have one other error that's in the cross-reference section.
And that scrivener's error?
No, an error on the error.
Error on the error, okay.
So not a big deal, but I don't know that we can just make stuff up. So 11.2.3.1 in our cross-reference, which is under energy regulations, is replacing 4.4 with 5.10, and that's not correct. 4.4 was a section that listed out in our prior bylaws, what was allowed in the LCD. And 5.10 is performance standards for the LCD. Performance requirements for the LCD. So we either just have to strike 4.4.
4.4 doesn't exist anymore.
Correct.
So it's, I think it's actually 4.2. I think, I think, isn't it? Because 4.2 is the table that details what's allowed in the LCD. I think I agree with you that it's not 5.0.
So that has to be changed on here.
So do you agree with me that it's, that what dictates what's allowed in the LCD is the table of uses, 4.2?
Yes.
Okay. So we would change in that 11 point, what is it, 11.3.?
11.2.3.1 should be 4.2 instead of 5.10.
Is that, so the section that amends 11.2.3.1 and currently refers it to 5.0?
5.1.
5.10. Should actually refer it to 4.2. I thought I had caught that one.
So we're gonna make this change in.
Well, we'll see if we can do it now, just get it into the motion. So let me just pull up, I can pull up 11.3.
I don't know how to use.
So this would be a change in Article five?
Yep.
And we'll announce it.
Let's see if we can get it into the motion.
Can we get it into that motion?
Yeah. 11.2. So I'm gonna pull up the section, so we can all see it. Okay, so, sorry, this is a little hard to read, but. Am I in the right correct position? Place, Mary?
Yes, and so the 4.4 should be 4.2, not 5.10.
So we, five, so sections, those were.
Second sentence, second line.
So, I don't know if you can see my cursor, that, that should be changed to, 5.10 should be changed to.
No.
Nope, that stays up in the second sentence.
4.4, sorry. Correct, okay. I agree with you 100%.
4.2.
Right, so four, just to clarify, 4.2 is our new table, which is, is what specifies the allowed uses in the LCD. And it's currently 5.10 in the, but it, that's specified down here later. I agree with Mary, that this should be 4.2.
Is that a motion?
I'll move to, to amend Article five, the scrivener's errors, and change the Section 11.2.3.1 to four, Section 4.4 should change to 4.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Stromley?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Philbrick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So we'll make that change. Anything else, Ms. Foley?
I have another change.
Other change?
I think, so on 9.2 with 4.2, the correction error document is saying 9.4.3 should change to 9.2.4.3. Everybody's listening.
Right, tell me the section. Sorry, I am listening.
9242.
9242. Everybody there?
Yes. Preliminary, conventional.
So it, it, the correction document has the 9.4.3 in that paragraph, going to 9.2.4.3, which is incorrect. It actually should be referencing inclusionary housing applicability, which is 9.3.3. Because if you go back to our 2018 bylaws, that's what it references back to for the conservation cluster.
But I think that was renumbered. The renumbered version?
Yeah, no, yeah, it, no, so I'm just saying that the, that section of the conservation cluster, paragraph, references the inclusionary housing applicability section.
And the, okay, can you just clarify for me? I don't have the, do you have the amendment?
Do you want me to?
Thanks. 4.4, preliminary, so.
Do you want me to show you in the original bylaw?
No, I want to see it in, if it's online. 4.4, oh, I see, it's the very bottom of the paragraph.
Yeah.
In accordance with, and it, he says 9.2.4.3, and you're saying it should be 9.?
3.3, which is inclusionary housing applicability.
9.3. Let's look at what 9.4.3 is. I'm just looking to see what 9.4.3 is. Six.
He just references you down to the next paragraph, which doesn't make any sense.
Sorry, I'm struggling here. So that people aren't watching. 9.3. I don't even see the 9.3. Someday we're gonna have a bookmarked set of bylaws.
So 9.3 is inclusionary housing, if you can search about that.
I agree with you. 9.4.? 2.4, yeah, just. No, I, I'm not sure I agree with you on that, actually. See, it's, it's saying, it's referring it to the next paragraph, which is the definitive subdivision, RCC plan.
But then you're changing what our current bylaw is, that's not what our prior bylaw.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So this, this.
You're saying it's not going back to the prior bylaw.
Yeah, so the, obviously the 9.4.3 is incorrect, but so is the 9.2.4.3. It should be 9.2. Do you want me to show you in the?
No, I understand what you're saying.
The whole book?
I believe you. And the prior one says 9.3, okay. Okay, so that would be to amend the motion for Article five, Section 9.2.4.3, changing, yes?
No, 9.2.4.2.
4.2, sorry. Changing the reference to 9.2.4.3 to 9.3.
9.3.
9.3.3?
9.3.3.
Point, 9.3.2?
3.
3, okay, sorry, 9, 9.3.3. 9.3.3, okay. I agree with Mary.
Your motion?
Very confused. Yeah, I made the motion. Mary's second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? A roll call vote, Ms. Philbrick?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Grayton?
Yes.
Ms. Stromley? Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, anything else?
Not in this section.
Okay, so the next item is the moderator report, and then I think what I want to do, since Nate's on the line, I wanted to just talk about the moderator report, and then move that forward, and then take the ADA committee regs for the Pine Street next. So that would put the cell signaling down a notch, so.
So I'll move the, our, the, the moderator report in our packet as the report of the planning board on the zoning changes as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Philbrick?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Stromley?
Yes.
Ms. Grayton?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, um.
Ron, can I just ask a quick?
Go ahead.
Point of reference, I don't know what it's called. Um, are we gonna talk about the motions, because there's some errors in here?
Yeah, we could, let's, if there's errors, we can bring that up during, at the end of our meeting. Let's, let's, let's get through this ADA business. Betsy, do you want to give us a primer on what happened and why you want, what, what came up and with this?
So when this project was reviewed, we had a number of people in the room and a number of people talking about the project, and at the time, there, there are a couple of boards and commissions that were involved, but I specifically asked a couple of people about this ADA group, and I was told they don't need to often, and they're so not to include them in, in any discussion or any correspondence. And Nate had actually talked with them prior to submission, and he had gotten some comments from the ADA group, and he took those into consideration. And then Nate contacted me the end of last week and said, I think it was Thursday, he said, we might have to do some minor modifications because the ADA committee is not happy with certain elements of this project. So I asked the chair to be, to have it put on the agenda, and Nate can explain, they're pretty minor changes, and I think in the future, the teachable moment here is that we will include a number of boards and commissions in staff meetings and, and in sending out planning board application, the submissions, we will include them to a number of different people so that everybody's aware of what the planning board is looking at, and they can comment. So I'll turn it over to Nate.
Yeah, so to elaborate on what Betsy said, back in the fall, I had met with the ADA committee and went through the project with them, explained the scope of work that we were doing, and, you know, what we were doing at the time to accommodate ADA accessibility to the field. You know, as we, as you know, we had the ADA ramp up to the field and the ADA parking. So a couple of weeks ago, a member of the ADA committee, I guess, upon kind of going out to the field and taking a look at it, asked about accessibility on the field and was wanting a, essentially a walkway to the quote-unquote bleachers, you know, to which I elaborated that, you know, we weren't having any fixed bleachers on the site, because it was gonna be more of a practice field, and we really weren't sure at this time, you know, in that regard of, you know, providing seating. And if we did any bleachers, they would be movable. So doing a walkway really wasn't, you know, feasible to do it to, you know, essentially nowhere to a bleacher that could eventually move. So, you know, taking a look, you know, I thought we could provide, you know, some ADA accommodation, to provide like a bench of some form, that if someone were to come in a wheelchair, that they could go from the parking spot to a bench off the kind of end of that, that portion of the parking lot, so they could, you know, sit and, and maneuver. And this is possible because we received pretty favorable bids on the project. We were very unsure going into the project, you know, where we're gonna land. We had the contaminated soil that we were potentially gonna have to deal with, and, you know, once we got all the testing bag, we did not actually have to dispose of any of it off-site, so that freed up substantial, substantial portion of money, you know, that had been tied down into the project. So, you know, trying, wanting to provide, you know, a more accessible project, and I guess a better all-around project, you know, we, I thought, you know, maybe we could connect the ADA ramp up to the field with this new, you know, with a proposed, I guess, concrete pad with bench for ADA accessibility. So that's kind of how we got here, more or less. So I had asked our consultant, Weston Sampson, to sketch up basically a, what was initially gonna be a concrete path from the ramp all the way over to the ADA parking area with a, a pad and landing for a bench. Wanting to maybe limit some of the amount of concrete, I proposed a paver walkway. So we had them, you know, basically sketch that up, and unfortunately, what I had sent to Betsy wasn't the final version. We were kind of still working through the details. We had a field meeting on Thursday with the consultant, our contractor, where we reviewed everything in the field and came up with a little bit better alternative to all of it. So they have provided a, a final sketch. So we are looking at a six-foot-wide paver walkway that would be on the field side of the granite curbing. We'd also include a water fountain, and again, because, you know, we have additional funds within our appropriation that we could add, and, you know, thought this would be a good addition to the field, adding a water fountain at the top of the ADA path, and then continuing over to the ADA parking spot where we'll have a, essentially a concrete pad with a bench. And I've reached out to the Long Jemby Bench folks, and to see if that would be something they'd be willing to support a bench there. If not, we could certainly provide, you know, one of our town standard benches, or what we're looking at in the wayfinding, that they're scoping out right now. So that's, that's pretty much, you know, where we're coming from on this change.
Where does the water fountain drain to?
That would, it's basically just on the corner of the field, so it would just be draining right to the, right into the field.
Any, any questions from the board, Laura?
Nate, you said there was a more recent plan, are you able to share it?
Yeah, if you can give me, if I can, I don't know if I have control. Yeah, if someone can give me control, I can share the current mock-up. Everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so here is the, so this is the top of the existing walkway. Be a new, uh, water fountain here, here's a six-foot wide, uh, paver path is what we're proposing, but, you know, we can really go with any material, um, you know, that the board would like. Uh, and then coming over to this area where the existing ADA, uh, parking spot is, and then doing a bench in this area.
Laura?
Uh, Nate, thanks for sharing. So I was looking at what was proposed online, and maybe that's just moved, there was, um, it appeared as though the path that had been installed was going to be saw cut, and some changes made in the alignment, but that's not the case, I guess, right? Is that path?
Yeah, so we are having to change that. We found a ser, there was some survey bust that we had, and basically the bottom of the ramp was a bit too steep.
I see.
Uh, coming into the bottom, so we're having to extend, so this, the one that was previously, and that was honestly our, our field discussion centered around that, a lot, or most of it, and the, the sketch you guys should, uh, saw was looping more around this way, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yes, that was not a, yeah, that sketch was problematic for me.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. Um, and so we came up with this, this is a much more straightforward approach, essentially just, just extending this portion or this curve a little bit further out, um, remaining within the overall project limits. Uh, you know, on this side of it, it was just going to be, uh, plantings, so more of the, you know, the plantings will just come to this interior side here.
Yeah.
Um, but really, it's coming from, yeah, this section down, um, to make the grades all work out.
That looks much better. What was proposed in the plan that you shared earlier, I was concerned about how tight a switchback that was, and it's hard to drive.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah.
So this would make the entire ramp up to the top of the grade at the parking, that would be compliant once that bottom, that very bottom section is re, re-poured.
Correct, yes.
And, uh, um, yeah.
Yep, all below five percent, so no issues there.
And there any landings needed?
No, because it's all below five percent, yeah, be, yep.
I don't think so, it's not a ramp, right? Okay, and then at the top, where the Serpentine path meets the pavers, there's a little bit of a weird situation there where the pavers are a little wider than the path, and just, um, I mean, I think the six-foot makes sense there, but it feels a little crowded with that location for the water fountain, um, because you may need to kind of stop and turn around, or if you're with someone, um, you know, it just feels a little bit crowded at the top of the path with the ramping down. I don't know if the water fountain could be associated with the bench more, or if Weston Sampson thinks that's the right place for it. Maybe they know best, but feels a little crowded.
Yeah, we were generally trying to keep it on this side, uh, just because that's where the service comes in, um, for the irrigation, so running it down from this side.
I see, okay.
I would, that was kind of one of my thoughts, was making this pad a little bigger, maybe, yeah, pushing the water fountain
A little wider?
a bit this way, maybe to more towards where my cursor's at.
Yeah, because you don't want someone to stop in the path, use a water fountain, and then block the access for the wheelchair.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Or whoever, the walker, whomever, you need to use that path.
Agreed, yep.
Yeah, so if that could, if that path could be made, you know, at least double in size, that would address my concern, so that whoever's using the water fountain doesn't block the, um, the route for any other user.
Yep, yep, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. Okay, and the bench, I take it, is facing the action on the field?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and, uh, just waiting to hear back from Lisa, she was on vacation, um, I think till the end of this week. You know, if that's a, something that, uh, should be amenable to, if not, like I said, we can go with, uh, you know, one of our town standard, uh, parks and rec benches for up there. Um, we are doing, uh, a couple longevity benches on the, off of the, uh, sidewalk coming up Pine Street, uh, along Moses Hill. Uh, so we are gonna have a couple over there already, uh, that I've been working with Lisa on, um, so we'll see what she says. But either way, we'll have a bench there.
Great, I think that would be nice. I do have one more question about, um, the open space on the paved area to the left of the bench in this plan. If that's where someone in a wheelchair would pull up, so right on the dark gray pad there, that's the, no, sorry, up next to the bench, right up next to the bench.
Oh, yeah.
So when we build these, yeah, right there, when we build these longevity benches, we leave, uh, space for a wheelchair user to pull up next to the bench?
Yep.
But it looks like if the wheelchair user or the walker was parked next to the bench, then that blocks the access for someone who needs to come and go down that two percent slope to the, because is there a little bit of retaining that's needed at the end of that paver pad?
I believe it's all gonna be, this area is a little tricky grading-wise, the way it's.
It looks a little tricky, yeah.
Yeah, the way it falls off, um, it is intended to be at grade.
Okay, because it looks like between the unit pavers and the two percent down, there's a little bit of a grade retaining situation there, where somebody needs to kind of go up and then turn around and go down the ramp, or step off the ramp, so, again, I would just take, ask Weston and Sampson to take a closer look at that, to make sure that someone in a wheelchair has room to pull up next to the bench and sit in the company of someone on the bench, and also not block access for someone who needs to come around and go down that ramp in a wheeled, or, you know, accessible motion. I, I think it's, um, I just wanna say, I really encourage, um, our partners on the ADA, uh, committee, whoever they are, I don't know them, but I think it's great to have, um, an ADA, an accessible use, um, uh, you know, kind of filter looking at these plans, because I agree, it just makes for a better plan, and it's great to have a place for all people to sit and, and pave path.
Yep.
So I think that's a, a benefit to pedestrians in general, and certainly we wanna welcome everyone of all abilities.
Is, is that a six-inch curb still there, or is that gonna be brought down?
It's gonna be a flush curb.
Yeah, here's the, uh, I guess we're not showing.
I think you don't.
Yeah, we don't show the curb in this detail.
Just looking at the spite elevations, it looked like it was still six inches.
The base of the, so two percent down.
So it's top curb, bottom curb, thirty-eight five.
Yeah.
I think that's.
This should be changed, no?
I think that's pointing to the side of the pavement, yeah, they, you should take a look at that, just make sure that's an accessible curb ramp,
Yeah.
and then it, I mean, it probably needs, you know, sometimes it needs to have a flare. So I, I think that little area is, um, kind of complex, and just needs to be, make sure it's working for everybody. Weston and Sampson, you can take another look at that.
Yeah, agreed, yep.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Chris and Foley's?
So, uh, Nate, the, the handicap space is right at that ramp coming off the bench?
Yeah, correct, right here, yep.
So it's not gonna be blocking the ramp?
No, no, so this is, this is, uh, yeah, the ramp is going through here, and this is the area that's blocked off to, you know, allow people to get out of the, the ADA, uh, parking spot.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Mary, Foley?
Just a quick question, that's probably not super relevant, but you mentioned irrigation near the, um, where the water fountain is. Is this field gonna have irrigation?
It is, yeah, that was one thing we actually added as well. So we had initially proposed doing water cannons around the perimeter, um, but, uh, added an irrigate, you know, because we had, you know, favorable bids, um, you know, it was about eighty thousand dollar difference between the low bidder and the second bidder. Um, so we made the decision and went to Concom, and they approved, uh, doing an irrigation system, you know, an in, a standard irrigation system for the field.
So then what kind of maintenance, if any, I, I just don't know other fields that have the water fountain, I'm sure they do. Do they need regular maintenance yearly, bi-yearly, whatever it is?
Yeah, so we have, you know, irrigation at, you know, our various fields, and we're actually specking the same water fountain that we have at Masco, um, with the bottle filler and, and fountain. Uh, so that's part of our yearly maintenance, and part of the design of the irrigation system is, um, making everything accessible, so it can be easily winterized, um, and then set up in the spring. So removing the backflow preventers, the water meter, uh, being able to blow out everything, so it is easily maintainable. And we were able to locate everything, uh, we were able to use an existing curb stop or, um, service that was off of the water main that served, uh, one of the houses that used to be here. You probably, probably seen the trench that's gone across the street, um, but, yeah, so we, we're able to do that pretty cost-effectively.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Do, do we need a motion, too?
Um, so, yeah, Betsy, do we wanna, um, vote this, uh, de minimis, de minimis change?
Um, so not knowing, um, what the planning board's, um, level of review on, on these kind of more minor changes, or these changes, I will say, um, I brought it back to the board because I felt, um, I didn't wanna just let these changes go without an acknowledgement, so I think what makes sense is if the board is going to approve them, that, um, basically a note be put in the file that it went through, you know, the permitting process, and the board has, at this meeting, um, reviewed a number of changes to improve the project, and basically list out those changes, um, just so that, um, when the building inspector goes to sign off on the whole thing, he is aware that the planning board reviewed this with Nate, and that everything's, um, in compliance.
Well, I think Laura had a couple of changes, so we wanna incorporate those, or in writing, or?
Can Nate give us a reference to the map of the plan? Like a date on the plan or something?
Nate, could you get us a plan?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
What was that? I didn't hear that.
Can you give us some, like, a date of that plan that, that we're looking at on the screen?
Yeah, that was, actually, as of today, uh, she sent it over about five o'clock. Uh, so we, I can have her make the revisions, um, you know, it, it would be, because we are basically wrapping up the project right now, if we can get approval tonight, that would be best for the overall project to move forward. Um, I would really hate to have the contractor stop work for, you know, until your next meeting. Um, you know, they're, even including this work, they're probably gonna be offsite within the next couple of weeks.
Laura?
Um, I, I can be a little more explicit about what's going on at the bench, and then I've prepared, if everyone's comfortable, to approve it based on the, um, conditions we're setting. So, so Nate, at the, at the area where the bench is, and we were talking about rolling up a wheelchair next to it.
Yep.
It might be resolved most easily if you rolled up to it on the right, and the pad for the bench extended it on the right, and then you could leave the area clear where you have to kind of rotate around and come down the ramp to the striped area. I'm just concerned that, um, even if you add more length to that bench, that there's gonna be congestion. I think the most important thing is to make sure that it's, it's always clear for someone getting through on that path, that you're not being blocked by user of the drinking fountain, and you're not being blocked by user of the bench. So, um, if they could take a look at that and make sure that that's sort of the driving, um, you know, design behind the route.
Yep, certainly.
Okay, great.
So I can write something up, and Nate can give us a plan, and, um, we can add that to the file so that the building inspector, um, fully understands that some field changes were made, um, that resulted in a better project.
And is there, uh, I'm sorry, was there a plan date, um, the plan you showed?
June twenty-sixth.
Oh, June twenty-sixth, June twenty-sixth, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll move to approve the field, the de minimis changes to the, um, athletic field, um, per the plan of June twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Um, and, uh, ask that the final plan around the bench be, um, sent to, to Betsy, and that Betsy and Laura review it on behalf of the board, um, in a time.
Bench and water fountain.
And bench and water fountain, and Betsy and Laura, uh, review the, uh, plan to make sure that, um, it reflects the comments tonight.
And I think you wanna include the irrigation system.
Um, and the addition of the irrigation system.
Second.
I'll second it.
I'm gonna just, can I speak one thing?
Discussion?
Um, I'm very much in favor of the irrigation system, water cannons are a huge waste of water.
Right.
So motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Kenny?
Yes.
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 Foley?
Yes.
Delicio? Ms. Philbrick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, okay. Get that field going.
If I knew there were water cannons on there, I would have freaked out.
Thank you all.
Okay, um, just an update on cell signaling technologies, um, Betsy, or I haven't heard back from the town on this request by Globski for a pre-meeting with stakeholders, um, is, is that something the planning board would, um, sponsor?
I think so, it's coming to you. I mean, the project is coming to you, it's not, it's already in the process of, uh, going to the conservation commission, and it's coming to you for special permit and site plan. I think if there's this pre-meeting that's desired, um, just to kind of iron out what, what kind of consultants are needed by the planning board, or, um, I'm not exactly sure, um, what the intent is, but I, I think that if.
Has anyone talked to Globski on this, or should I? Uh, I, I, and I don't know who the stakeholders we wanna have come. I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, uh, I mean, I guess I'll talk to.
I can talk with Mark and, and get back in an email to people, um, this week.
Uh, Greg, do you have any comment on that? I, I can't hear you, Greg.
Sorry, um, I was assuming it would be a, a similar process that Betsy organized for the, with the compost project, where she convened, um, you know, different department heads and, and any committee representatives, and just do a, a review and highlight issues and concerns. I don't, I don't know if you said.
That would be after the filing, though. I don't.
Nothing to prevent us from doing it ahead of time, right?
So, kind of a question. I think, well, I think it's somewhat premature, because we won't have plans in front of us, we won't have, people won't have plans to study it before this meeting. I don't know, let me, I can talk with Mark and get back to people.
Christina?
So I'm just a little, this is all new, I didn't hear anything about this, so who's calling for this meeting?
Globski wrote to me, said I'd like to have a pre-meeting with town boards.
Stakeholders? Oh.
And so, uh, my question is, is the planning board gonna do this, or is the town, or, you know, and who? You know, who do I invite? And, you know, what's the, what's the process, and?
I, I think you didn't say that, and I don't, I don't think I saw an email, right, you didn't forward it to us?
No, he's asked, and I.
No, I'm just trying to follow along, I'm missing, I'm missing a gap.
Yeah, no, he's asked, and I forwarded that question to the town for guidance.
But you're asking it, and we're here, um, I feel like you're having, like, I'm just not connected, I'm just not following along with the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm trying to get the process straight.
Okay, so, are we gonna talk about it?
Well, there was another thing that we wanted to talk about with, with, um, consultants, and, uh, so.
So I think that having a pre-meeting with a large applicant with the town boards makes a lot of sense. Let me give you a couple of examples. One is, there's probably a road standard, um, that, you know, in terms of thickness of pavement, or whatever, you know, that, that, that the town uses, and, um, or there might be a coordination, the town is already doing something on that road that, that, that cell signaling would have to redo dur- during construction, so coordinating those things on the ground seemed to me to make a lot of sense, um, on a whole bunch of topics. Also, the. Also, the, the Conservation Commissioner, Commissioning Agent will say, here's how we like the application to come in because they're variable, you know, and, and our board particularly has this. And Betsy would say, you know, is the planning board's most concerned about this or that, or try to. I think the question, so to me, that makes all the sense in the world, um, to try to avoid having them submit something and then have the DBW director say, oh, well, but our standard is this. You know, just kind of align things with the town's standards. What an example, another example is oftentimes we get, you get a site plan, a plan, and then you present it to the fire chief who says, no, you have to have access all the way around the building. And if they know, hopefully they've already had that conversation because I know they're well into design. But that's an example where if you had that conversation early, you, you, everybody saves time and money and, um, headache. So, I think having a meeting with the town staff should be encouraged. I think the question in my mind is, I know the select board has a representative to cell signaling and I don't know what those conversations are. And I guess the question is, should we have a board member who is a liaison, not to make any decisions, but to simply be the person who, a little bit, but I think Betsy, for the moment, is that person. And, um, given our efforts to be inclusive among ourselves and, and not, that maybe we don't wanna wait on, on the, a planning board member being a contact. But that's, um, you know, if Betsy's stress, uh, pressed for time, it might make sense to have one member of the board or even two members. I don't know if we can do that. Um, not to make any decisions, but to simply sort of help the, help the board understand what, what they're trying to do, help the applicant. We might not just do it with cell signaling. We might do it with any applications. Help the applicant understand, you know, let's just say that on the site, on the field, if there had been a planning board, Betsy was new, there'd been a planning board member as a liaison to that project, perhaps there might have been a conversation like, did you talk to the ADA committee? Maybe there wouldn't have, maybe there, you know, it's just another set of, um, people helping the applicant move forward, not, but not prejudging any particular thing. So, just, those are three of the pros and cons.
I would, I would tag on to that, that, um, so if we're, if we're trying to do a, um, correlate a model across boards in town, so if there's a liaison, liaison, liaison?
Liaison.
Sounds funny all of a sudden. A liaison on the select board and there's the town administrator that's also there. Then if we have the town planner, then there's also a planning board member because there's staff and then there's board members and it's vastly different roles. And then whoever that person or persons is, then reports back to the board.
I think Brian Salas, he's the select board member who's just been asking about meetings, so. Laura?
Uh, I think that the, um, idea of coming before boards before is middle makes a lot of sense because we can provide input when it's not yet, um, it's a forum. Everybody can hear the same thing. We can all be there hearing each other's comments. So, I support that. I'm a little less certain about having a planning board liaison to a project before it's submitted because if there's already a select board, I worry about too many points of contact and, um, unintentional mismanagement, miscommunication, mismanagement, miscommunication or crosswires and too many report backs. And so, I think if there's one select board and the town planner, I think two is more than, uh, two is plenty because that's one staff person, one board member. At this point at least, I would recommend we kind of keep it two.
Always changing people.
I kind of follow along with Laura. I feel like the select board is keeping up with maybe some of the infrastructure grants, things that are going on, but we're actually gonna be voting on the permit. So, I, I agree with them. I'd be getting into too many muddy waters. I guess with this stakeholder meeting, I'm under the assumption that everyone of the planning board would be there in addition with other boards.
I assume so. That's what I was trying to clarify, to clarify.
Okay, yeah.
Could you, Betsy, talk to Globski and let me know what he, what his thoughts are on this meeting?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. So, the next item is the MBTA Communities, uh, 3A update. Is there, uh, any news on the committee?
No news. No, the next meeting of the board is June twenty eighth, I believe.
It's Thursday. It's Wednesday.
July twenty eighth.
June twenty eighth is town meeting.
July twenty eighth.
But there is some activity with the, um, MIT. Is that, um, conversation taking place with Professor Levine and is that something Betsy you intend?
That conversation is taking place on, I believe it's the eighteenth of July. So, MIT approached, um, a number of communities about, um, using some of the students in a practicum, um, within the community. And the town of Manchester by the sea was selected. So, about eight graduate level students in planning are, um, are going to be working with their professor, Jeff Levine, and the town. And they will be looking at things like MBTA zoning and, um, some other issues, which we have yet to fully iron out.
So, this is...
And that will be this fall. And as I understand it, the students, um, have a number of different expertise. So, one might be an urban designer who's really good at graphic design, who might be able to show us what fifteen units an acre looks like. Another one might be more into the zoning language or in the regulatory language. Another person might be into the GIS elements. So, um, anyhow, he's apparently got a very diverse class and, um, they're excited about the potential of working with Manchester. So, we're having, um, Greg and, and I, and I think Ron and Anne are having a meeting to talk about that on the, I think it's either the seventeenth or the eighteenth of July. I think it's the eighteenth.
To talk about what?
The student project.
So, isn't that like a direction of what, I mean, she...
To talk about how their school program would interface with the town.
So, interface in what way? I don't understand what that means.
Um, how the school, how the students within MIT's planning program would, um, use Manchester as a practicum for looking at MBTA zoning and, and other development issues within the town.
Do we wanna eventually hook them up with the committee?
Yes.
So, well, you know, we're gonna make that connection at some point. I mean, I think we're, you know, are we behind here in schedule? Are we gonna have enough time?
Yeah. I'm working on a schedule right now. I met with, um, Chris and Garn and, um, we talked about a schedule, um, so I'm actually working on that. I should get it to them and then it's a day or two.
Mary?
So, a couple of questions. I'm, I'm confused. So, if you have anything that you could send us about this, I, I, I think it's the first we've heard of it. Have we heard of it before?
Yes.
MIT. So, I guess I look at it that the individual boards would discuss and see if we want to use these students or is the town saying, here, you have to use these students?
No, I think we're gonna use them. We're gonna take the free help. Why, why wouldn't we?
Okay. And then my next question with the MBTA is that I know we, or I had asked for data a long time ago to get on the website of all the basic data that we should already know with, you know, how many you, I, I sent you a list, Betsy, of, you know, how many units are in District G, how many are multifamily, how many units are wet, you know, how many acres are wetlands, you know, all that stuff. Are we close to getting that on the town website?
Yes.
Like, within the week, you think?
I think that could happen.
Okay.
So, did we submit, could you send us what you submitted that we were chosen for? You said that we were chosen. Manchester.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like the planning board should be giving some direction. I just feel like this is a little out there. We don't have a grip on it.
Well, that's, go, go ahead.
So, I've worked with many student groups and, um, I think that they have, I think they usually work with a staff person. And if you think of it as a, um, opportunity to, uh, get an idea, a bunch of ideas, graphics and images, sometimes they will be effective at being more of a consultant. But I think in general, they're gonna go off and do their project. They're gonna take our data and they're gonna walk around town and they're gonna meet with the planning board. I mean, you know, they're gonna meet with boards all over town and they're gonna go off and create some vision that is gonna be their vision. It's gonna be their project. And the benefit to us is that it might have some creative ideas that we hadn't thought about or some, um, uh, uh, graphics that we can use. But at the end of the day, the task force and then the town, planning board and the town are gonna own whatever the solution is. So, I think the student project is kind of this ideas canvas. Students are students. They're not consultants. So, they have, they're learning.
Well, that's what I was trying to see.
And, and so I think we rec, I mean, they're not gonna substitute for a consultant or a expert in, you know, somebody with Betsy's experience or somebody with Greg's experience or somebody with that, one of these technical assistance experts. But I think they give an opportunity for sometimes some really out there ideas or that we can pick and choose from. And it is kind of this neutral group from the outside. But I think we shouldn't, at least in my experience with student projects, we shouldn't expect that they're going to do our work for us. But yet, it's this great opportunity. They'll make some presentations. And from my experience with student projects, sometimes you say, think, well, that's a nice idea, but... And sometimes they make presentations where you say, huh, we hadn't thought of that. And so, it kind of is this little opportunity. And the other thing is that we have an opportunity to give back to students and to share. They need real world opportunities and so this is for the students. It is, you know, they're paying tuition to get this experience. So, we should remember that. And, um, I think it's great that Betsy and others are willing to spend some time on it. But I think we would be naive to think that they're gonna come up with a solution or that, that they're gonna subvert the public process either.
Don't think that. I would just like to see what the charge is with that. I would like to see what we submitted, that we were chosen for, that language. And then I would like to see the agreement between this Professor Levine and the town. I mean, someone, I mean, if they're doing work on the behalf of the planning board, I think we should be...
But I guess my point is I'm not sure they're doing, I think they're doing a student project that the town and the planning board and the task force can then avail ourselves of or, or not.
Well, I guess, I would just like to see that language.
And I think if I were gonna be in that meeting, that kickoff meeting, I would say, you are not speaking for the town. You know, you're here as a student, you know, that kind of thing so that there's no confusion. If the Gloucester Times interviews them, that they say, and Manchester is going to
No.
put up high rises or whatever they think is the idea that they need to understand. That's one of the parameters about working in that kind of realm. And sometimes they don't always follow those rules.
Again, I would just like to see the agreement between the town and this Professor Levine in writing versus just seeing it at the onset of a meeting.
Becky?
Yes, thank you, Ron. Sarah said it exactly as it is, that it's simply students coming. There's no foregone conclusion, no agenda. It's, it's, they're not trying to come to the planning board and say, this is what you should do. Sarah really said it beautifully. I just wanted to, um, state that from the select board or from my perspective on the select board, um, that's what it is. And if, it, it, the professor reached out, um, so you probably, Christina, you could probably talk to Sue Proft about that if you wanted to get some more information, more specific.
I'm just looking for an agreement in writing. That's it. I don't think I should, town planner should be able to provide that.
Okay. There was no planner's report this week. Liaison committees, coastal zone management. I know you had a meeting.
We had a meeting.
Big thing going on.
Uh, there's a public meeting of the, of the draft report, um, last week, late last week, which I attended. And, um, the technical report is posted on the town's website where, under the Climate Vulnerability Action Plan. And, um, they will be finalizing the report as required by the grant, I think at the end of this week. But this is sort of, you know, stage one in all the pieces that come out of this. So, it is looking at the analysis of the different scenarios of different, you know, flood projections. They talk about where the source material comes from and then they go into these different alternatives about scenarios for the town's consideration, um, kind of short term, medium to long term and a few different, uh, iterations of that. So, I think these are all, again, kind of really good data and then also some idea generating with a lot to think about after this. Some of these are really large investments on the one hand, the medium to long term. And then there are kind of common sense, uh, low hanging fruit, short term investments about, you know, raising generators and waterproofing some things. It is not a hardening plan. I, I noticed that in the meeting minutes. So, I wanna steer away from that word. It's not just about hardening facilities. Some of this is very much nature based about, um, you know, using wetlands and parks to soak up, um, flood storage. But, uh, I think there are, I think it was a really well-done effort by the consultant team, Woods Hole and, uh, the Fussin' O'Neill Consultants think they did a terrific job. They, um, the report that I saw took in the comments that they heard from the public and I think it's a great kind of jumping off point for whatever happens next.
Did you have any construction cost, any cost data in this?
It had a little bit, really long term. I, I don't ever put a lot of faith in those construction estimates, you know, at this very early stage and without, these are not projects that we can get bids on or anything like that. So, I would caution us about putting too many eggs in any of those baskets for construction. Maybe with the exception of some of the short term kind of, you know, raising a generator. Some, there's some more certainty to those kinds of things. But I think they put those costs in where they put them in just to show kind of order of magnitude from, you know, what can we do today to longer term. Yeah, I think much more analysis and design is needed before you even understand costs. There are also a lot of operational costs in some of the, especially the midterm solutions where you might use deployable floodgates. You have to store things. You have to people, have people deploy them. So, there is the first cost that they're constructing and then there's an operations cost and so. And then there's a cost of not acting. So, I think the town's gonna need to dive for more deeply into all of that. But I think the technical report is excellent.
And it's available on the website?
The draft report is available on the website and then once it's finalized, it will also be available on the website under the, where the town has the climate action plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, harbor management?
Um, I think I reported last time that the harbor management committee is looking at the Urban Harbors Institute. Uh, we're having a meeting with them, uh, late, mid-July. The date is not yet finalized. A little bit backwards process because they have done so many of the region's harbor management plans. They're gonna, we've got an outline, um, of the elements that we are thinking about in the plan and they're gonna kind of respond to that and show us, um, the scope of what they do. I think one of the challenges is trying to figure out how big a scope geographically we can afford and we can have because our harbor, it turns out, goes from Magnolia Pier, you know, all the way to, um, Chubb Island. So, um... So um, that's a big chunk of land and coastline. And how far inland we're gonna go, because there's the coastal resilience overlap. And then, so we'll be sort of thinking about that, so.
Okay, thank you. Any movements on the FEMA map bylaw of the floodplain?
I spoke with Betsy briefly today and I was asking the same. She can speak, but she had mentioned that we would not get final FEMA maps until January, February, so. Is that correct?
December, January.
December, January. And that the bylaw then wouldn't be until spring. Town meeting. My concern with that, which is, it is what it is, but my concern is that so many things hinge on the floodplain bylaw with MBTA housing, with any development, especially downtown. So we have to be very cognizant of the changes. And I think it's important for the board to discuss what we want in the floodplain bylaw, even if we don't have a final draft. That, because I think there needs to be some substantial changes.
Can we straw one? We got template.
Absolutely.
Isn't, isn't there a straw that was, that Betsy gave us a link to?
It was the older version, but it's my website. It was the old version. That was just the model floodplain bylaw from the state. There's many towns that have very good, strong floodplain bylaws that are definitely a good launching place.
Could we put that on a meeting agenda and maybe Mary could walk us through?
Yeah, could we get that before us, like a template?
Give us a summary of.
You mean samples or?
Well, just sort of what the issues are. Like, I'd love to know the sort of high level, what the state bylaw is and then what you've seen in, as model bylaws from other places. And maybe start to craft something into, even without the final maps, right? Cause we have draft maps.
Yes, and that, you know, some of it gets into, you know, a lot get, gets lost when it becomes a year-long process or two years or three years, right? Like, sometimes it makes sense to do the bulk of it within a shorter period of time. But I do think the substantial changes should be discussed and agreed upon, or at least mulled over of what direction we're going.
Yeah, good draw.
I saw a comment. I think we asked a few months ago at this point for a timeline, because Betsy had mentioned this takes a while, but we still don't have that, the time review that the state needs to look at it, we need to submit. So I'm just unclear on that. Have you seen that timeframe, Mary?
I mean, I think there's other towns have that. I mean, I could just find it.
They do. They don't, they don't.
Betsy, you have a comment on the timeline?
Yeah, my planner's memo, I think it's two meetings ago, talked about the timeframes. And um, I've had Fay Jingle working on looking at um, the model bylaw and looking at what other communities do and how far they stray from the existing, from the model bylaw. And apparently there, there is quite a straying um, from the model bylaw. But these mo, these, these customized bylaws are getting approved, which is really good news. So um, I will get a memo out with the model bylaw for one of the next meetings.
I'd love to, I mean, I know Mary spent a lot of time on it. I'd love to have, maybe if Fay has done some work, she can coordinate with Mary and we could put it on the, on a meeting in, or, you know, whenever makes sense. And, and, and the two of them sort of give us, I, I'm not, I haven't studied it. So I'd love to get an overview of what the model is and what we, what issues we should be thinking about. And if we think back to our, our zoning bylaws, often then we start with something that's dense and, and, and done. And then try to tweak it. It would be great to sort of start with, as Mary said, the, the big pictures, what are the issues we have to decide. And then maybe just hand it to the lawyers to codify them, rather than trying to, or take models from other towns or something that. So I think there's a great opportunity to kind of understand the issues and, and so. And maybe Betsy, during that process, Betsy could sort of detail the, you know, the process that was in her memo. So we all have it in a visual meeting discussion, so. Laura has her hand up, I'm sorry. Laura.
Oh, Laura.
She's gonna add to the floodplain, so because the FEMA maps are always backwards looking, they're historic looking at what floods have happened. I think makes sense to me to go ahead and start on the regulatory language and then the maps can get there and, you know, we can adapt as needed. I think we'll see, I predict without having seen the two maps side by side, that we'll see less change from the previous FEMA map to today's FEMA map than we will to any FEMA map and the projections that are in the climate study. Because those are factoring in sea level rise much more than the FEMA maps will, you know, to date. So for the Harbor Master Plan and for the 40A, I think really looking at the climate vulnerability plan and the action plan and having that as a consideration when the planning is happening. It's just, you know, that might be useful, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be quite a departure from what the FEMA maps show. We should regulate to FEMA, but we should maybe plan to projections.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, the reason we'd have to wait on the bylaw is because we'd have to reference the maps and if the maps aren't available.
Sure.
Okay, good. Get a start on that. That would be great. The Water Resource Task Force, us, on June 20th, sends an executive summary to the select board at their meeting. I think it calls for a structured um, water payment system. We're paying the water bills, meaning the higher users will be paying more. I don't know if that was accepted by the select board. Maybe Greg or Becky can comment on that. And um, I did put the draft minutes in your packet late today. Just if you wanted to read them at the last meeting. Do we know if the select board accepted that rate structure last week? Greg, cause that.
Ron, yeah, sure, I can comment. So they haven't formally accepted it. They're moving forward with a formal hearing. It is their first or their second July meeting. So they're moving forward with it, but they need to have a formal hearing out before adopting it.
Okay, and then I think there'll be one more meeting of the Water Resource Task Force and then we would be dissolved in that. I believe that they're gonna be dissolved in the task force at that point. On the CPC, we have a meeting Thursday at 5:30, so I will be reporting back to you guys next meeting. Tomorrow at 6:00, there's a governance meeting of all the chairs. I will report back to you guys at our next meeting, what comes of that. That's all I have on liaison committee. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, Chris, all.
So the Affordable Housing Trust met last week with the housing authority and we agreed to issue a request for qualifications from developers. The idea being, instead of asking for specific proposals, that we just get a chance to engage with companies like Harborlights and CDC and other organizations that do affordable housing. And work with several of them on a redevelopment plan. And once we come up with one, then we'll put out a request for specific proposals based on their input. I think the problem with going out right away with a request for proposals was the, the properties are so complicated and it's state financing involved and, you know, it just, people just weren't prepared to spend the time and effort to submit a proper proposal. So this will be a more informal process, which we have vetted with town council to make sure we're doing this the proper way. The other complication is that the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state has been reorganized into an executive office of housing and community services, I think it's called. So it's now a secretary position rather than just a department. That means they're hiring new staff and putting together our own new administrative procedures and so forth. So in a way, that's good, because we'll be in with them on the, sort of on the beginning of their reorganization process with our, our work. And hopefully I'll look at what we're doing favorably, maybe as a model for other small housing authorities in town, in other towns. Also, the Downtown Improvement Program Committee met last week. They are trying to coordinate the wayfinding, benches, signage, street furniture, downtown bathroom, with a plan for redoing some of the sidewalks and streetscape in the town. And so they're, they're planning to come and make a presentation
Next meeting.
to the planning board, so we'll, we'll be updated with what they're trying to do.
So does all that stuff, is that a downtown improvement? Cause planning board hasn't, I mean, we've gotten a presentation maybe a year ago, but we haven't been involved in the process.
No, there'll be, I guess they'll come in and give us a presentation with their, I believe they're gonna bring their consultants with them.
Yes.
And that will be on the 10th, which Betsy, I understand you won't be available, correct?
That's correct. Civic Space also has a meeting that night at 6:00 or 6:30. So they are looking for a meeting time with the planning board of around 8:00. So that they can go from a meeting in Essex to a meeting, meeting in Manchester.
That's also on the 10th? Civic Space?
I just think that's a consulting.
Yes.
Wayfinding, you want?
Oh, okay, so that would be good.
And they're finalizing their report. They came into the planning board about three months ago to talk about um, the project.
I do have a question about that. Nate mentioned that tonight about the benches for wayfinding that were presented from that wayfinding effort. And I don't have a strong feeling about what bench goes at the playing field. But um, maybe this is a, I guess, maybe it's a question for Greg or for Betsy. Who's gonna make a decision about the implement, potentially implementing those recommendations? Because it seemed to be in a vacuum and that's just, maybe it's just my, we had, just bathrooms. You know, we have two historic bathroom facilities, like seems to me our bathrooms should look like one of those two. Or at least they should be among those considered. Or, and particularly the benches were kind of, we have a lot of, we have some classic benches around, that match all around town. And to put something different should be a very, very deliberate decision.
So you'll have the presentation.
So we'll get the presentation and then we'll give them that input.
I'll tell you what the recommended designs are and why they selected them.
Why, okay, I, all right. Well, I'll, I'll hold my thoughts.
I have a couple of questions on that committee. So if, maybe I'm misremembering things, but was there a conversation about raising the CPC amount from taxpayers? Have you guys talked about that?
We haven't talked about it.
You have?
No, we haven't.
No, no, the CPC committee.
Why has the CPC talked about it?
They have not presented that yet, although I think they got goods on the raising of, they have a few options on the raising of the rotunda.
No, 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 like the amount that we're charged is an excess. I heard someone saying that we went up it from, is it 3% to, and the percentage that we pay.
Well, it's a possibility.
I mean, as if, as if you guys talked about that.
Not yet.
Okay. Um, my other question was, I did find Betsy your memo from May 18th. But you had said several times, this is not, the floodplain is not an easy bylaw to pass. And you specifically had mentioned, you know, it takes a submission to the state. I was looking for a timeline, simple. You know, the state's running at three months to review. Like, how long realistically does it take us to get a floodplain bylaw? That's not in this memo. So Mary, I don't know, you've seen that on the website? Uh, maybe not how long it takes the state.
So I specifically asked the state and they indicated to me in a telephone call that they would work with the town and guide us through the process. And with the floodplain maps coming out in January and February, they would guide us through the process for spring 2024 town meeting.
I guess, but you're still saying something, but not, you, you said it's a long process, but what does that mean? Guide us through the process? Do they, we still don't know what the process is. Like, that's all we're looking for, a simple, what is the process? You said it was very complicated before and it was gonna take a long time. I just would like something more definitive.
Well, I, this, this came up when um, another board member mentioned making some changes to the zoning. And it was implied that it could happen in the fall. And it really can happen in the fall, because we don't have language. And as I understand, the state, the state takes anywhere from three months to nine months to review it. So um, that's what I was.
We've lost Betsy.
I'm not really understanding.
Could I, could I make a recommendation then?
Yep, go ahead.
That knowing that the state does take a long time to review and we might not get it to spring town meeting, that we go ahead and do a bylaw if it's even based on the old maps and then.
That could change.
Yeah.
I agree.
Makes sense to me.
I think we should wait for the map. I think we have so many things that are going to rely on this.
Yep.
That, you know, again, even if we get it done by February, if it takes the state six months, we, you know, we've lost the window, so.
I agree.
I think we've already lost the window. I thought we were aiming for the fall.
Okay.
Well, oh, yeah, well, we'll never get it in the fall. I thought originally we were, but that.
Well, it's still six months, right? November, it's July, July, August, September, October, it's five months.
So let me know when you're ready with something.
Why don't you do an overview and then?
Yeah, why don't we do, yeah, why don't we start talking about it? Maybe, maybe end the next month, something like that. Okay. Proble, anything else on liaisons?
No, but we have to go to the motions.
The motions?
The motions.
Motions. Okay, let me just finish. Proble, regular meeting minutes, 5:22.
I wasn't there.
What?
Oh, he looked at me. I wasn't there, so I didn't remember.
Now, move to approve as written.
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Tony?
Yes.
Ms. Ollie?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Felicio?
Yes.
And Ms. Um.
Goldberg.
Goldberg?
Yes.
Okay, and then one last thing that came in today, and I don't know if it got distributed to everyone, but from the town clerk, Wednesday, 7:12, 9:00 AM, Lenham Library, roles and responsibility of boards. They're having a, someone come speak. Did you guys all get that email?
It just came by email, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I don't have to send it all. Okay, on the, I don't have the, before me, do you have the motions?
I did, well, they were in our packet. I have them up here.
Let's just go through any changes.
I think we already addressed, we had already voted to put them on the warrant.
Yes, and I, and I won't speak for Christine. I don't know what she was talking about earlier in the meeting. But what I was talking about and then was rudely reprimanded, was that when and where was it decided? Who made the motions and what the motion language was? I do not recall that at a prior meeting.
That's exactly what I was referring to. Other boards, FinCom, Select Board, they discuss, they talk about, they vote on who's making the motion and who's sucking in it. This document just appeared and I don't know.
This document just appeared and I don't know where this happened.
So could we just step back and hundred, so we can all understand where and when that happened?
So the, you're referring to the language that says, just to everybody's clear, motions, Sarah Creighton moves and Ron, Master John, well, seconds.
Who said that?
That's in the, it's in the handout. And the question is, where did that come from?
It came from me.
Other boards vote on it and talk about it in meetings. I don't know why, we used to, I don't know why we don't, like, feels like.
It was the same thing, Chair's decision. It was the same thing last meeting, I made the decision on who's gonna speak and who's gonna second. The two of you voted against the, so you were out. So I picked Chris and Sarah.
But it's not, I mean, and, not to argue, but it's not really Chair's decision. I don't know where that is defined.
I made the decision.
So that.
Whose decision is it?
The board's.
I mean, you wanna go through the motion of voting it?
Well, I think it's a courtesy to the board that we decide how this is gonna be presented at the public hearing, so I.
I made a board, I made the decision as Chair.
I think it's a very slippery slope, that we used to do things, things are different now and other boards do it. I don't know why we needed to change, I don't know why. I guess, what, what do you feel that you have discretion as the Chair?
To tell who's gonna speak on the, on those two items, on those three warrants. I think I, I think this is my job.
Excuse me, Ron.
Jack, second?
We do not vote on it. It's people volunteer and one person says, I'll move, I'll second. We don't vote on it, just to be clear.
It's a discussion that should be at a board meeting and if we could try to keep this as, as planning board discussion. So I think going forward, it would be nice to follow protocol of other boards and follow protocol of what we used to do. That's, that's my request. The, the other issue that was brought up was, at least the last meeting I was at discussing this, we were gonna have Article 12 and then, I mean, I'm sorry, Article 3 and then Article 4 and then two cross-reference articles depending if Article 12 passed or not and then if Article 6 passed or not because that references the corrections in Article 5. So I don't know when the decision was made to condense it into one. So I, I'd like to understand that a little bit more and there's a couple errors in there that we need to correct.
The decision's been made by, as Betsy said, with the Select Board. But if there are errors, we should fix them.
So the Select Board decided that they wanted us to just have?
We voted three articles, actually. We voted to move three articles forward. We did not vote four of them. We may have discussed four, but we didn't vote four, I don't believe, but we can check the minutes. So four are post, three of them are posted and I think that's where we are right now.
Because I do think it's, it's confusing if we have to do amendments on the floor.
I agree with you, but.
And now we'll have to do more amendments on the floor. So I think with this Article 5 highlights the ones that we would have to switch if 12 does not go through because it's referencing 12.6 in a number of areas. I think there's.
So the article does say, it has parentheses, changing all references to 12.6 to 6.5 and it's got asterisks, if, if three passes and four, three fails and if Article 3 fails and Article 4 passes. That's in our packet.
Yes, so there's just.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, this is Becky Allen, is no longer on this. So as, as moderator, he, because we've already published the warrant, any changes do have to be made on the floor.
Yeah.
So we can't go modifying now. That's, if you wanna do that, it has to be made on the floor. And Mary, to your point of it just being a planning board meeting, when I hear inaccuracies or when I hear somebody saying something that's just absolutely not right, it is well within my purview is member of the Select Board to bring that up. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion on the floor. If that's.
What is the, no, what's the correction?
So I guess someone from the Select Board is just gonna interrupt the conversation and stop this so we don't have a ability to talk among ourselves. I think that is really inappropriate. So Mary, you've been diligent and hardworking about making sure that these are correct and I.
But I get my hands up. So I will make a motion on the floor.
I'd like to know what the correction is.
Well, I think someone just, you know, shut her down and, I think I'm on it right now, thank you.
Well, so we take our marbles and what?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I mean, I come to these meetings and get beaten side to side every meeting, so I'm trying to do the due diligence, I'm trying to point things out and it does get exhausting. So I'm, at 9:00, I'm exhausted.
I mean, you were supposed to be involved with all these publishings, so I don't know what happened.
We went through these last meeting, I really appreciate it. If you have another change that makes this better, let's hear it.
We did not go through the change, the motion that said, and change every 12.6 to this.
Why wouldn't we change 12.6 to, the reference to 12.6 to 6.5? 12.6 is the site plan review and 6.5 is the new site plan review.
Agreed.
Is this the error there?
So what I am commenting on is the motion, now I don't know where it is, that says, so I'll pick up my marbles, that said.
Which article?
Article 5. So I've never seen the motion language before. So when it says that it's highlighted, as well as changing all references to 12.6 and 6.5, I'm merely pointing out that you highlight certain 12.6s and not others. I don't know if you want them all highlighted or not. And again, it would be good if we could do this as a board, but it's done and then it's given to the board. So if it was collaborative, I would have pointed it out at that time.
We had help from staff. So where are the ones that are not, 12.6 in the section 11.1, 1.3, 3 are not highlighted? Is that correct?
11.1, 1.3, 3, correct.
Okay. We can make that change. And I think that would be helpful to people.
So then I, aside from this, I do have one more comment that's not related to this. Just as a, things not anticipated, other matters.
Hold on a sec.
So I spoke with the Attorney General's Office about the rules and regulations document and the process that we took as a board, that we submitted comments to town staff and then town staff reconciled the comments, chose which ones to put in and then posted the document back to the board before the meeting. That is an open meeting law violation. I'm still waiting to hear back how it works if a planning board member makes that, that open meeting law violation or if a resident brings it forward. But I would like as a board for us to work within the confines of the law that those types of things don't continue to happen. We just wanted the board to know that.
Anything else from anyone?
I'm not for your turn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, hands? Thank you.